Welcome to the City of Bakersfield Planning Commission Meeting. This television broadcast is made available through cooperation with the local cable companies, the County of Kern, and the City of Bakersfield. The Planning Commission meets on the first and third Thursdays of each month. You can watch the rebroadcast of this meeting Saturday at 7:00 PM and Sunday at 10:00 AM. The planning meeting agenda is posted on the city's website at www.bakersfieldcity.us.
Should I get started? The lackluster introduction. All right. With that, it is my pleasure to call to order the May 4th, 2023 Planning Commission Meeting. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Chair Cader.
Here.
Vice Chair Bhishir Tash. Commissioner Biddle.
Here.
Commissioner Cor.
Here.
Commissioner Coman.
Here.
Commissioner Lomis. And Commissioner Neal.
Here.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all for attending tonight's Planning Commission Meeting. This commission provides an opportunity for public participation in the development process throughout the city of Bakersfield. The Planning Commission considers a wide variety of projects, including subdivision maps, zone changes, general plan amendments, and much more. When applications are received, the Planning Division analyzes the request. Planning staff will present the facts about the project along with their recommendation to the commission, who will approve an item or make a recommendation as appropriate. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Agenda Item 3A, Public Statements.
Does anyone in the audience wish to address the commission regarding items listed on tonight's agenda? Please note if you are here for non-consent public hearing, Item 6A, this is not the time to speak. You will be given an opportunity to speak when that item is called later in the meeting.
Non-agenda Item 3B, Public Statements.
Does anyone in the audience wish to address the commission regarding items not listed on tonight's agenda? If so, please come forward and state your name. Seeing no speakers, Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Agenda Item 4, Consent Calendar Items.
All matters listed under the consent items do not require a public hearing and will be enacted by a single motion. There will be no separate discussion of said items unless staff or a commissioner request specific items be discussed and/or removed for separate action. May I get a motion approving the consent items?
Moved.
Commissioner Neal, may I have a second?
Second, Pat.
Commissioner Biddle. Commissioners, please cast your votes.
Motion passes with Commissioner Bhishir Tash and Commissioner Lomis absent.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Agenda Item 5, Consent Public Hearings.
Now is the time for consent public hearings. If the item, please note if an item is not removed by a commissioner, staff, or a member of the public, the commission will vote on all items in a single motion without further action. If an item is removed, it will be placed at the end of the non-consent public hearing items. At this time, I will open all of the consent public hearing items. Does any member of the public wish to remove a consent public hearing item? Seeing no members of the public, does any commissioner or staff wish to remove a consent public hearing item? Seeing no commissioner or staff requests, at this time, the consent public hearing items 5A through 5D, oh, my apologies, 5E, are now closed. May I get a motion to adopt staff's recommendation on the consent public hearing items not removed, incorporating all staff memorandum and revised staff recommendations?
Some of.
Commissioner Neal, may I have a second?
I'll second.
Commissioner Biddle. Commissioners, please cast your votes.
Motion passes with Commissioner Bhishir Tash and Commissioner Lomis absent.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Agenda Item 6, Non-Consent Public Hearings.
Now is the time for non-consent public hearing items. Before we begin, I want to explain how the hearing will be conducted. Staff will first give a report, then those in favor of the project will be allowed to speak. Those in opposition to the project will be able to speak after all of those in favor have spoken. Each side will be given a five-minute total time to provide rebuttal comments. Individual speakers may ask questions during their statements, but the questions will not be answered until the public hearing on that item is closed. If preferred, written comments may be given to the clerk, who will provide copies to the commission. Please be respectful of others participating in the hearing by not repeating the remarks of previous speakers and presenting any new thoughts or comments in a concise and clear way. Mr. Johnson, would you please provide us your staff report?
Yes, thank you, Chair Cader. Commissioners, members of the audience, thank you for attending tonight. So this is a zone change. It's a different type of zone change request, and it kind of emphasizes why planning staff does not advocate conditioning zone changes or general plan amendments, rather, conditions should be applied to projects or development specifics. So this request is a zone change from C2 to C2, regional commercial to regional commercial. And the purpose of that is to remove a declaration of restrictions that was part of a zone change request almost 40 years ago. So to understand where we're going with this project, we have to understand how we got here. So this presentation will focus heavily on the background of this project site. It is located in southeast Bakersfield, south of White Lane, between Hughes Lane and South H Street. May 1980, 475 acres were annexed into the city, and this is on the northern port part. It was 125 acres of light manufacturing zoned property. Those 125 acres were subsequently divided up and rezoned in 1984, where you had light manufacturing going to single-family, multifamily, commercial office, neighborhood commercial, regional commercial, and even had three acres going to ag production. Within that, you had 21 acres that remained light manufacturing, and I'll come back to this slide because this is where the declaration was incorporated. Those 21 acres in 1986 were again subject to a zone change, where the light manufacturing went to C2, regional commercial on two and a half acres, and this project site was part of the rezone that went to multifamily or R2. 1992, there was again 36 acres this project site was part of, and it went from multifamily to regional commercial. There were some subsequent changes throughout this area on surrounding properties, and this is what we have today. And again, you have six acres of general commercial land, which is our subject site, and you have single-family to the south, a little bit of light industrial to the west, and then you have some regional commercial to the north and east. So coming back to this slide, in 1984, because this remained light manufacturing and the surrounding properties were now residential and commercial, which, again, to ensure there was no, or to ensure there was compatibility with the light manufacturing remaining, there was a declaration of restrictions applied to all the M1 property. In part, this was also to protect against depreciating surrounding property values. The declaration ensured that appropriate onsite development in the building locations were placed properly. It guarded against using unsuitable material, and it ensured that proper setbacks were maintained from streets. Now, fast forward to where we're at today, building code and city development standards really address those requirements. The declaration stated that all buildings within this area shall be for light, industrial, or commercial only, and exterior walls shall be of concrete or mason, except the walls that face the interior of the site, those could be made of asbestos. The declaration runs with the land, and it was binding for 30 years and automatically extended in 10-year increments. To cancel the declaration, it had to be signed by 80% of the owners or to do a zone change to remove this covenant. The applicant initially went down trying to get the owner's signature, but these properties have been subdivided multiple times, and there's multiple owners, and so it was easier in the end to come back with the zone change. The proposed development, although it's not being considered right now and we do not have an application, is going to be for housing, 54 studio units, 95 one-bedroom units, one onsite manager's unit, outdoor amenity area, a clubhouse, community room, and laundry room. And so again, these are, this is a residential use where the declaration says it can only be commercial or manufacturing, so that is one reason for removing, or the request for the zone change to remove the declaration. Also, the developer has indicated they do not prefer to have or be limited to construction of masonry or concrete or asbestos walls, so that, again, the declaration is being requested for removal. We didn't send out notification to all property owners within 300 feet, signs were posted onsite, advertised in the local newspaper, we received no public comments. In essence, because of the funding source, the developer needs a clean title, so this is why the zone change is coming through, so that way there's nothing to inhibit funding of these housing units. It is for these reasons that staff is supportive of this request and recommends approval of the zone change. Complete staff's presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson, particularly for the retro nature of a lot of those slides. That was interesting to see. At this time, the public hearing is now open. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak in favor of the project? If so, please step to the microphone, identify yourself, and proceed. Seeing no requested speakers in favor, is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to the project? If so, please step to the microphone, identify yourself, and proceed. I will defer to the city attorney, as we have no speakers in favor or opposition, should we forego the question period and move to close the hearing?
If anyone has questions, I mean, they can still ask.
Prior to the hearing?
Right.
Then I will offer, are there any commissioners that have questions for either the applicant or staff? Remember, this is a time to ask questions, not state or express any opinion on the matter. I will also note that my request to speak is not set up, and so I believe, Commissioner Coman, you have a question? Okay.
So I will ask my question. I'll make a quick, no comments, right?
No opinions or comments, just questions.
It really limits me, like, tie my hands behind my back. Mr. Johnson, can you repeat your first statement that you made at the very beginning? Because there was a comment about conditions affecting project versus zone, I don't know, I don't, I'd like a clarification on what your point was.
So my point is, is if a project changes and there's a condition of approval to that, if there's a condition of approval that requires a certain action or certain requirement, if that is imposed on the actual zone change or the general plan amendment, then you'll have to go back through a zone change or a general plan amendment to remove that. Conditions should be more applicable to projects, such as if this was a housing project, then you apply conditions to that housing project, such as it will do this and it won't do that, rather than the actual zone change. Because in this instance, or like on a general plan amendment, zone change, planned commercial development project, there are three resolutions that your commission votes on, not just one project. So there's three separate resolutions, and then those go forward to city council, and the city council also has, actually, it's an ordinance for the zone change, a resolution for the general plan amendment, and then a resolution for the development. So what I'm saying is it's the actual development that should have conditions, not necessarily the zone change itself. Does that make sense?
Yes, thank you. I have no further questions.
Thank you. Commissioner Coman, the request to speak is now enabled, and I believe we have Commissioner Neal.
Okay, I think my question's kind of similar to the last one, just for clarity. This is just for zone change, and I'm looking at the conclusion slide, and I'm looking, I see a railway through there, and I know that there was a condition in the declaration for a block wall, and it looks like there might be one along that railway adjacent, with all those, you know, adjacent properties. Just wondering, I guess at the time of development, that would be a condition that can be imposed if that is in fact a railway right, right there?
And so that's correct. So the ordinance, since this is a commercial site, the ordinance will require a block wall around the residential that you see to the south of the project site. I believe that is M1, a little bit of M1 light manufacturing property between this and the railroad. And so what would happen is when we're reviewing the residential portion, we would look at that distance to the railroad, and we may require a noise study to make sure that any rail going through there would not impact the residents of those units.
Yeah, and maybe even, and would the current ordinance require a block wall right there?
It does not require a block wall between commercial and industrial zoning. It requires the block wall between the commercial and the residential zoning.
Got it. But considering that this will be, it sounds like they're going to be proposing a multifamily unit with children and things, that is a condition at a later time, at the time that the development comes before the commission, that the commission could impose that requirement?
That could, if it does come before the commission. Depending on state bills, assembly bills, different types of funding, you can have commercial, or you can have residential property in commercial zones without discretionary approval. But if that is the case, what we would do is we look at it from an internal standpoint is what impacts are to these sensitive receptors, what impacts could there be? And so we would look at the railroad and make sure there's no impacts. We would also go to the previous zone change where they had it to the residential to the south of this, and we would look at that noise study and see how they addressed that between the railroad and that residential.
Okay.
So this may or may not come back to your commission.
Yeah, and so my only, well, it's not time for comment. Okay.
Thank you, Commissioner Neal. Seeing no additional commissioner comments or questions, not comments, thoughts, or opinions, I will now close the hearing and move and return to the commission for comments and action. Commissioner Neal.
All right, so finishing that thought, my only comment is that I like the fact that there's a block wall requirement here on this portion, especially if this is going to be repurposed for residential use. I like that on the northwest side, there's a block wall there, and frankly, I also like that on the side that, that is adjacent to, that's on Lettering Street, I think that's called, because I know those are shopping center and stuff. Nice if that was a block wall too for the people who live in that development in the future. I really like the fact that there's a block wall. It's such, it's so oddly positioned, this property. I like the block wall, and so I'm not, I don't want to remove the block wall requirement.
Can I, can I clarify? I'm sorry, can I, just to clarify, I think the, correct me if I'm wrong, but wasn't the block wall was for the construction of any buildings onsite, was the condition that was placed?
Within the declaration?
Within the declaration.
I would have to go back through and look at that declaration.
Whereas certain adjacencies that are required in the municipal code would still be required.
That's, that is absolutely correct.
Yes, if you could clarify that, just. Well, my understanding was that, because this was in an era where block wall, manufacturing, and asbestos interior walls was, so is that?
Now, when I say, and let me just be clear, my slide that talked about walls was the actual, like, masonry, concrete walls, that was building wall, not, not surrounding boundary wall, I'm sorry. That's my confusion. That's for the actual construction of the structure, is what it is.
Got it.
But, but they're proposing a block wall anyway.
Oh, perfect. Good.
My apologies for not being clear.
No problem, we like that. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Neal. Any other commissioner, oh, Commissioner Coman?
Thank you. So we're not going to have asbestos walls on these buildings, then, huh?
That would be the developer's choice, not to.
Yeah, all right. I think it's funny that we go back and we find this stuff written in these, in the codes that it was codified, that you had to put it in, and now we're going, taking it all out, so. But I wanted to say that to Commissioner Neal's point, the Housing Authority of Kern has done tremendous projects, and I would expect them to want to build a wall around that in the first place. So I'm very happy to see the Housing Authority of Kern take over this parcel that's been sitting there languishing for all this time, and I think we can all agree, we need the housing, so. I know that we've, I was trying to look it up, but I wound up crashing the computer, but we did a couple of projects under the Housing Authority on Union Avenue, where we renovated, actually tore down some motels, and we built some apartments, whatever, and it's not run by the Housing Authority of Kern. And they're not probably being maintained as well as projects that are run by the Housing Authority of Kern. I was fortunate enough to attend an event when Housing Authority of Kern won a state award for their projects that they do, so I'm very happy to see the Housing Authority come in here and do this project, and like I said, we need the housing, so I support whatever we need to do to accommodate the Housing Authority.
Thank you, Commissioner Coman. Are there any other commissioner comments? Yeah, I was curious, I'll just make a few comments and then ask for a motion. Has, so my understanding is based on the C2, there is no PCDO overlay, so we probably will not see the project again, right? It will just go through staff review? Is it, or is it still conditional use?
Residential in the C2 zone requires a conditional use permit, but the state does have avenues to remove that discretion to streamline the process for providing housing.
Okay, well, I was just curious, because it was, there was kind of a little tidbit about number of units and density, if this project is kind of in the pipeline to be realized, or is it kind of a future, is it too early to say? Maybe it's not my place to ask, but I was just curious.
Because they did their due diligence and identified this and have gone through the zone change, my thought is, is that we would probably be receiving an application within the next few months. This would be, because if your, if your commission decided not to approve this, then they'd probably look elsewhere for property.
Got it. And is there any indication of, you know, we talk about RINA a lot, and we talk about housing numbers, the affordability index for the proposed development?
It's just below market rate, so you'd be looking at the lower to moderate income levels.
Yeah, I just, yeah, I just want to quickly nod that I think, looking at the neighborhood, looking at, I mean, I think this represents a really not-too-unique site. There's a lot of sites like this throughout the various neighborhoods in Bakersfield, and I just think it's a very good example of infill, how to create housing options, housing density, utilizing land that has really been underutilized for some time, and so I would look for a motion from the commission. Commissioner Biddle?
I would like to make a motion to approve Item 6A.
Thank you. May I have a second?
Second.
Commissioner Neal, all right. Commissioners, please cast your votes.
We're going to have to have a voice vote, because I don't have access to the voting thing, because I made it, I made the thing go away.
This is going to be our first meeting where all the technology works.
Chair Cader.
Yes.
Commissioner Biddle. Commissioner Cor.
Yes.
Commissioner Coman.
Yes.
Commissioner Neal.
Yes.
Motion passes with Commissioner Bhishir Tash and Commissioner Lomis absent.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Agenda Item 7, Communications.
Mr. Johnson, will you please lead us in a warm welcome to?
Yes, I would like to congratulate Commissioner Neal for being reappointed, and welcome our new commissioner, Commissioner Cor, for Ward 7. Congratulations on that. Our next meeting is tentatively scheduled for May 18th. We will know for certain tomorrow. If that is canceled, it'll be June 1st will be our follow-up meeting on that, and at that next meeting, we will have elections for a new chair and vice chair. That's all I have.
Fantastic. Madam Clerk, next item.
Agenda Item 8, Commission Comments.
Commissioner comments, does any, do any commissioners have any comments? Commissioner Coman?
Yes, I do. First of all, thank you for accommodating me and my technical, whatever I did over here, so.
Well, thank you for the non-verbal cues. It was not, it was not hard to.
I wanted to say that, I wanted to thank Chair Cader, who hosted a walkthrough of the Q last Friday, and this is a relatively, well, it's very new, a brand-new apartment project at 18th and Q Street. And I was, I wanted to say that I was very impressed with the project in general, but I've also brought to light some of the issues that we need to be keeping in mind when we're considering housing projects like that, especially in the downtown, but wherever space is limited. So I think the takeaway for me is that we really need to pay attention to, you know, the new housing element update beyond reading the executive summary. And I think as commissioners, we need to read it, understand it, and then champion it. And so I wanted to thank commissioner, or thank Chair Cader for inviting me to that. I wanted to congratulate him on a very well-built project, and thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Coman. I appreciate that. Also, just for members of the public and the commission, the housing element is currently under a public review process, so I believe it wraps up the 16th of May. So is it bakersfieldrise.com?
Bakersfield2045. Bakersfield2045.com.
Dot com. Go online, provide input. As Commissioner Coman said, housing in 20 years will look very different than it did 20 years ago. We will probably not be building with asbestos walls, and amongst other changes, but it is our community's element, so make sure your comments are heard. Are there any other commissioner comments?
Yeah, I just wanted to welcome our new commissioner onboard, and I told her, I said, they sat you next to the, I don't know if we're going to move seats, but to the newest person, and if you need me to, I can just scoot back so you can ask Commissioner Lomis questions, so, but welcome, it's great to have you.
Thank you. I just want to say that I'm very excited and happy to be here. Thank you.
Thank you. I will just close out commission comments, saying congratulations on being reappointed, look forward to another, serving together on another term, and welcome so much to the chamber. Look forward to serving with you over the next few years. So with that, Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Agenda Item 9, Adjournment.
This meeting is adjourned at 5:59. Have a great evening.